I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu.
Here.
Mr. Sizmar.
Here.
Mr. Hong.
Here.
Mrs. Lacks.
Here.
Mrs. Reese. Mr. Seeler.
Here.
Mr. Simmons.
Here.
Mr. Winston.
Here.
President Becker.
Here, we have a quorum. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published at the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast, and it is the policy of the Board of Education that videotaped meetings are not edited. Individuals who speak at the meeting should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening. Welcome to one of our favorite nights of the year. Without any further ado, I'd like to ask my fellow board members, Dr. Valesky and administrators, to please come and let's all find seats in the audience.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this extraordinary evening. It's my honor to welcome you to this year's 2019 Staff Award Ceremony. We are here to recognize and applaud our 24 teacher and support staff award winners, as well as staff members who have served in the district for, believe it or not, 25 and 40 years. Their dedication and commitment to our students and East Brunswick public schools is recognized and truly appreciated. A very special thank you to the family members who are here this evening. I'm sure all of you have been major contributors to the success and accomplishments of these individuals and have made your own sacrifices on behalf of their careers. It is now my pleasure to introduce Ms. Vicki Becker, President of the East Brunswick Board of Education.
Good evening again. Mrs. Polisi was my fifth grade teacher. She was very warm and loving and made us all feel like family by the second week of school. She was one of the first teachers I had who encouraged us to take risks and fail, and she was always there to help us when we stumbled and to learn from our mistakes. When my mother went to the parent-teacher conference that year, Mrs. Polisi told her that I was a wonderful student and a pleasure to have in class, but I was way too Boyd crazy and that I had better calm down before I reached junior high. Mr. Berger was my science teacher in junior high. As a matter of fact, I had him for biology and physics. He was very stern, very strict, but, oh man, did he love science. I struggled with physics. He really helped me. He stayed after school, he came in early, he did everything he could to give me extra study time but to give me the confidence to know that I could do this. And the day after the finals, I was walking through the halls and I heard this voice behind me, "Harris," that was my maiden name, "Harris, I marked the physics finals. You got an 88." I was stunned, but I felt like maybe I let him down. But before I could say anything, he just got this big smile on his face and he said, "Great job." And I felt like I won the lottery. And there was Ms. Sadie in the office in the high school who every time they put up a cast list for the high school musical would call me down to the office so I could see I got one of the leads, and every opening night she was right there. And Mrs. Cobson's, an English teacher I had in high school. I used to go to her classroom after school and we'd talk about Shakespeare and reading, and I'd tell her all my dreams, knowing that I was talking to someone who believed in me. I see all of them and all of the teachers and support staff that I encountered during my K-12 years like it was yesterday because they all helped to make me who I am today. And that's why we're here tonight. Because of a group of incredible men and women who have touched the lives of hundreds of children. And those children will carry in their minds and their hearts and souls a little piece of all of you as they go throughout life and as they become the people that they are destined to become. It will be because of you, and there is no greater accomplishment. The Board of Education is so proud of all of you and we cannot thank you enough for everything you do. We look forward to many more years of accomplishments from all of you. Thank you so much.
I'd now like to invite Dr. Dana Zimbicki, who's President of the East Brunswick Education Association, to say a few words.
Good evening, everyone, and first I would like to start by thanking all of the teachers and education support professionals in the audience tonight as we celebrate Teacher/Staff Appreciation Week. So, I always look for inspiration when it comes time to write this speech each year. Over the years, my inspiration has been my recent gardening, a quote that I recently saw that might have inspired me, or a current event. But this year, my inspiration is coming from a TV series, which is kind of odd because I barely watch any TV. But it's the series New Amsterdam. How many of you've watched that at all, right? It's an amazing show. This series is based on events and people in a real New York hospital. And the lead is Dr. Max Goodwin. He's the medical director of a struggling hospital. Dr. Goodwin's goal is to disrupt the status quo and prove he will not stop at nothing to breathe new life into his understaffed, underfunded, and underappreciated hospital. He comes in swinging big and he wants to prioritize patient care, and his signature line is, "How can I help? How can I help?" And when I hear that, it immediately made me think of you, the wonderful teachers and support professionals, always breathing new life into our profession, always swinging big by going above and beyond, working in a profession which is sometimes underfunded and sometimes underappreciated, and always prioritizing putting our students, staff, colleagues, and community first, sometimes even over your own families. Each of you are being recognized tonight because you too, like Dr. Goodwin, are always asking, "How can I help?" Your readiness to help never goes unnoticed. It really never does. You encourage, you support, and nurture your colleagues and our students. You make a difference in a unique way, which is why you are being honored tonight. The East Brunswick Education Association congratulates you on this honor, and we thank you for your "how I can help" commitment to the public schools of East Brunswick and for never accepting the status quo. Last, I'd like to congratulate the 19 members of our seasoned staff as they celebrate 25 years of service to our district and a special honor to Lynn Kapusta, who has devoted 40 years of asking, "How can I help?" Thank you for your dedication, positive influence, and passion. You've made this district above the rest. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. And now I'd like to introduce Mr. Joe Satari, who's Principal of Warrens Dorfer Elementary School and also serves as Secretary of the East Brunswick Principals and Supervisors Association to make a few remarks. Joe, you have to pace yourself when you're walking up.
Sorry, sorry, Dr. Valesky. Yes, I am very happy to be here tonight representing the East Brunswick Principals and Supervisors Association. Our President, Andy Scanlon, had a family engagement, so he asked that I speak here tonight, and he will be buying me dinner. This is fine. Thank you all for coming out to support your family and friends and your coworkers. It's a great accomplishment to be recognized as support staff or Teacher of the Year. I've served on the committee that reads all of the letters written on behalf of these fine people in the past, and it's truly inspiring reading every one of those letters. And thank you to those of you who write those letters, too. That's fantastic. Tonight's honorees are the role models of our community. They are the go-to people in their buildings, and they seem to be there when you need them most. In a few moments, our principals and central office administrators will be speaking on behalf of each honoree, and it's always the highlight of the night. I love hearing about all the great things that the honorees do and how they consider their actions as ordinary operating procedures when, in fact, our honorees are extraordinary people who do extraordinary work, and that's why they're being recognized this evening. Tonight, we also recognize years of service, which really means years of dedication to the East Brunswick public schools. In today's world, it's uncommon for someone to stay in the same career, much less the same job, for over two decades. Thank you for your dedication and loyalty. So, on behalf of the district principals, assistant principals, supervisors, and department chairpersons, I'm here to say thank you for your service to our students and congratulations on a well-deserved recognition.
So, as we really kick this off, and this is really the last time you get to see me at the podium, so you can be thankful for that, I want to introduce really the person that's the master of ceremonies, the real architect behind this. There's always one person that is responsible for putting all of this together, so Daniel Rogiro. And before she begins, I just want to make one quick statement. There's probably not many people in this district who know every single staff member and something about their story more so than Dani, so we appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Valesky. I just want to echo Dr. Valesky's statement. Having you all here tonight is what makes the celebration extra special, so we're so appreciative. First, we are going to, with the help of our principals and some of our central office administrators, we're going to bring to life the stories of 24 outstanding staff members in our schools. After that, we will celebrate our years of service honorees. Each of our honorees is what contributes to the excellence in our schools, so we are going to start with Bowman Row Elementary School.
Good evening. I'm Ron Lieberman, Principal of Bowman Row Elementary School. Former UCLA basketball coach John Wooden once said, "A good coach can change a game. A great coach can change a life." When I think about our Teacher of the Year, instructional coach Shannon Williamson, I'm astounded by how she changes the lives of our students and staff every day. From the moment you meet Shannon, you sense her strong ability to inspire others to reach their personal best. While her official title is instructional coach, she plays a much bigger role at Bowman Row School. Shannon is our go-to person when a teacher needs an idea for a guided read-in lesson. She is the one we consult when we need a strategy for classroom management. She is the source we seek out if we had a bad day. She's the coach that students seek out in the hall for a hug or a kind word, a reassuring smile, or to share the success of learning a new skill. Having taught multiple grade levels, Shannon instinctually knows how to craft a lesson to reach every type of learner. Shannon's focus is always on inspiring teachers and assistants to think outside of the box and creatively. This coaching has a profound effect on student learning. Shannon gives honest, positive, constructive feedback after visiting a classroom and works hand-in-hand with teachers to implement a strategy or a program that is mutually selected. Staff and parents naturally gravitate towards Shannon because of her incredible respect for all people and her friendly, reassuring, compassionate demeanor. She has a unique way of making you feel like whatever you say will be valued and is important, whether you are a child or an adult. It's amazing to watch the connection that she has with our kids without being a classroom teacher. Like I said earlier, she changes lives. So, it is with great pride on behalf of the entire Bowman Row community that I congratulate Shannon on this well-deserved honor. We are so proud for her to represent us as our Teacher of the Year. Bowman Row's Support Staff winner this year is Lorraine Zebrow. Lorraine is a deserving candidate of this award for so many reasons. As an instructional assistant who spends her days working with our students, Lorraine's quiet and unassuming way benefits their learning. This makes students feel comfortable and cared for in her presence. Lorraine has the amazing ability to know when to help a student and when to back off and let them work through things themselves. She values productive struggle by students and understands how to assist them without supporting in a way that diminishes their feelings of accomplishment. Lorraine is best described by her colleagues as a chameleon. She can literally switch hats between grade levels and subjects in less than a minute flat. One minute, she is assisting a student with writing in third grade, and the next period, she's helping a fifth-grade student in science. And by the way, she's super smart. She has a strong ability to understand the focus of each lesson and provide support to that objective using many scaffolds and strategies. As an East Brunswick resident, Lorraine is a great representative and role model for our district. She is well-known throughout the community as a person whom the students respect and admire. They go to her with questions, respect her opinions, and seek her advice. She is an integral part of our classroom community. In fact, she is someone whom the teachers respect and admire, too. She employs her background in education in parenting and all her genuine goodness in everything she does. For these reasons and so many more, Bowman Row School community is thrilled to name Lorraine as our Support Staff winner. Congratulations, Lorraine.
Hi, my name is Danielle Dinnoa, and I'm the Principal of Central School, and I'm proud to introduce Central School's special award winners for 2019. First, our wonderful instructional assistant, Shari Manos. From the moment Shari walks through the doors of our school, she positively interacts with the students who are often waiting for her arrival. While Shari's primary responsibility is instructional support, she is seen out and about in our school. In the cafeteria, she helps to supervise her students, encouraging them to eat a nutritious lunch and interact appropriately with their peers and adults. During outdoor recess, she encourages students to be active and try new things, and when the weather keeps us indoors, she ensures students are interacting with one another in appropriate ways. Shari Manos is a wonderful educator and fabulous human being. Her nominator's right. On the instructional side, she makes learning fun with her kind and friendly mannerisms. Her enthusiasm for learning is contagious, which makes her wonderful to work with. The children at Central School absolutely adore her. Known as a team player, Shari never shines away from an opportunity to help a student who needs a little assistance. With her kind, loving ways, she provides academic, emotional, and social support to our students. Shari has a huge heart, which leads her to go beyond her assigned tasks. Shari takes time to connect and truly get to know her students. She has provided a warm winter jacket, gloves, and a hat for one student who was wearing a windbreaker in very cold weather. She has also bought a toothbrush and toothpaste for a student who didn't have one. All of this is done quietly and respectfully. As you can see, Shari plays the role of a mother, teacher, and friend to all she encounters at Central School, which is why we are so happy to name her Central School's Support Staff winner. Congratulations, Shari. Next, I would like to present our amazing Teacher of the Year, Kristy Sheridan. I always have to be the loud school. Kristy demonstrates an incredible rapport with all staff, students, and families. One nominator stated that it would be difficult to find another educator who rivals Kristy's passion and contributions to education. I couldn't agree more. Kristy enthusiastically greets each student with a smile and positive outlook for the day, and regardless of that day's challenges, she leaves students with that same smile and enthusiasm. Kristy's passion for teaching is evident in all that she does. She makes learning a fun and positive experience for all of her students. Kristy remains patient, calm, and positive regardless of the circumstance. Her intuitive, flexible nature allows her to be a true advocate for all of her students. She works endlessly to ensure that each student's emotional, social, and academic needs are met, and her goal is always building her students' independence. It's no wonder her students make the progress they do. Kristy is often seen spending her prep time eating with students, sitting with a student in the nurse's office, observing one of her students in a different setting, or supporting a child in crisis. One time, she even rode home on the bus with her students to teach them appropriate bus behavior. In the words of her colleagues, one teacher stated, "Kristy has the patience of a saint." Another colleague wrote, "Kristy is an inspiration. She's a true leader among teachers." And my personal favorite, I like to think of Kristy as a child whisperer. If a student is off task or acting out, she quietly whispers in their ear and calms them. I am continually amazed by her. Kristy always goes above and beyond and never hesitates to serve as a mentor to her colleagues. She provides advice, guidance, and motivation to teachers, instructional assistants, and parents, all while continuing her own graduate education. Kristy's dedication and energy are endless. She is a special kind of person, and we are so lucky to work with her. Congratulations to Kristy Sheridan, Central School's Teacher of the Year.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Megan Minetta, and I am the proud principal of Chittuck Elementary School. I am here to share with you two Chittuck superstars. First, our Support Staff Award winner, Janet Solano Fitzgerald. Janet began her East Brunswick career in 2014 as a substitute teacher, utilizing her past experience as an elementary teacher in Springfield. Quickly recognized as a highly skilled staff member, she was recruited to join the special education team as an instructional assistant, where the Chittuck staff cannot believe how lucky we are to have her. Watching Janet work is watching love and support in action. Every day, she brings to work her incredible love and support for her students and also provides mentoring to adults new to the program. Janet employs her pre-service teacher training and pure dedication to her students in assisting them with everything from life skills to math problems. Her kindness, her willingness to learn, and her love truly shines. Janet arrives at work early each day and takes initiative to prepare materials and the work environment to optimize student learning. She has gone above and beyond to provide our students with any extra materials that might benefit their learning and expand upon what the classroom teacher is doing. She goes above and beyond her expected role, which impacts student success and is always appreciated by those lucky enough to have her on their instructional team. One of Janet's most admirable characteristics is how she is a lifelong learner, always seeking knowledge and growing her expertise in special programs. In addition to her role as an instructional assistant, she also serves as advisor to the homework club, reaching out and supporting even more students than the ones in her assigned classroom. The staff at Chittuck School hope we have brought to life the wonderful story of our Support Staff winner. Congratulations, Janet. Inspiring, engaging, driven, dedicated, caring, and generous. These are all words that define Chittuck's Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Wendy Tepper. There's a lot of spirit. Since 2012, Wendy has been an integral part of the Chittuck School community. She shines brightly both in the classroom and out. Her influence has changed the lives of her students, her colleagues, and the East Brunswick community. She is a positive force who rallies everyone around her in support of kindness, respect, and growth. We are thrilled to be honoring her this evening. Wendy's colleagues know that she teaches from both her head and her heart. She develops fun and exciting lessons that engage her students and make them truly want to learn. She does an excellent job of getting to know her students as individuals, taking the time to understand their learning styles, backgrounds, cultures, strengths, and areas of needed growth. She holds daily morning meetings where students can share more about who they are and how they're feeling, and she uses these details to make deeper connections with them as learners and as people. When you enter Wendy's classroom, you can expect to hear students discussing the roses and thorns in their daily lives, along with essential math and language arts skills. This is because Wendy values students as learners academically, socially, and emotionally. In addition to her strength as an inspiring classroom teacher, Wendy is the ultimate cheerleader for Chittuck. According to her colleagues, there is not a special event that goes by without the Wendy touch on it. Whether it's organizing everyone's attire for a spirit day, collecting record-breaking numbers of food bins for an MC Foods food drive, counting change for pennies for patients, or writing and acting out skits for a school climate assembly, Wendy does it all. or writing and acting out skits for a school climate assembly, Wendy does it all. Perhaps one of her favorite tasks is helping to choreograph the annual teacher dance for our talent show. Believe me when I say that there's a lot of laughter during those rehearsals. It simply cannot be overstated that Wendy is truly dedicated to the profession of education. We are thrilled to honor her as Chittick's Teacher of the Year. Congratulations, Wendy.
Hello, I'm Loretta Payette, Principal of Frost Elementary School. Tonight, I have the privilege of bragging about one of the most passionate teachers I have ever had the privilege of working with. Lindsay Grossman, our amazing preschool teacher at Frost School, has always approached her job from an honest and caring place, ever mindful of the individual needs of all her students. She is an exceptional teacher, loved by her students, staff, and parents alike. She is patient, nurturing, and deeply concerned about the students and their families beyond the walls of Frost School. If you go into the community on the weekend, you will more likely run into Lindsay attending one of her students' extracurricular activities, or volunteering her time to attend a fundraiser for autism or other special needs causes. She has devoted countless hours to do home visits for her students, set up behavioral supports for their families, visit kindergarten programs, and write social stories. In 2013, Lindsay opened her first class with just two days' notice when we had an influx of three-year-olds in our district. She spent days and nights creating a safe, exciting environment for her young students. And nearly six years later, she is a seasoned, dedicated, compassionate, and talented educator who shares her best practices with others. Lindsay is so deserving of this award because she, so humbly, makes each child in her class feel unique. She greets each interaction, even the challenging ones, with the sweetest smile and the kindest, most comforting voice and touch. She always has words of encouragement to keep the children feeling valued and motivated. If I could quote Magic Johnson, "All kids need is a little help, hope, and somebody who believes in them." Lindsay is that person. Lindsay doesn't just lay bricks, she builds skyscrapers. Congratulations, Lindsay Grossman, on being Frost School's Teacher of the Year. Frost School's Support Staff winner is our beloved Safety and Security Officer, John Napoli. When John joined our staff in December of 2015, he immediately made an amazing connection and established a positive rapport with the staff. Officer John has been a constant source of comfort and support at Frost for over four years. His colleagues wrote, "With a critical eye to security, John keeps Frost students and faculty safe on a daily basis as they arrive to school and leave at the end of the day." His prior experience as a police officer for over 26 years in our town has prepared him well. John is at ease with big issues such as security drills and medical emergencies, but he never minimalizes important events such as a missing lunch, which can be traumatic to a student. When John enters Frost School with his welcoming smile, he is such a comfort. He is soft-spoken, patient, and compassionate. This is not only true of his interactions with students, but with staff and parents alike. However, when it comes to the safety of our students and staff, John is anything but a pussycat. He has ownership over every person in our building, and he takes every situation seriously. He is always looking to put safety first. He plays an integral role in our safety and security drills and gives us excellent feedback on ways to improve, which is always greatly appreciated. Throughout the day, John can be seen escorting our preschoolers to their destinations, Hello Kitty backpack in hand. He can talk sports, police business, or what the favorite Ninja Turtle is this year. Whatever the assignment may be, John handles it as if it was the most important. He can even get a wild turkey to walk quietly across a busy intersection at dismissal. He is Frost's own Steve Irwin. Just ask Trudy Atkins. Unfortunately, John could not be here tonight. He serves as a troop leader for Boy Scout Troop 105, and this evening is special to John, as not only will 50 young boys move from Cub Scouts to Boy Scouts, but his son Joey is one of these wonderful young men who will be among moving up. We congratulate him on both accounts. Congratulations, John Napoli.
Good evening. My name is Joanne Schmelowitz, and I am the very proud principal of Irwin Elementary School. Robert Fulgham once wrote a book entitled, "All I Really Need to Know: I Learned in Kindergarten." And if you or your child are lucky enough to have Roseanne Pansion as their teacher, this is a completely accurate statement. Kindergarten takes a special kind of teacher, as so much of the job revolves around teaching our students how to go to school and simultaneously teaching them the content they need to be successful socially, emotionally, and academically. Roseanne has the skills to balance these important areas in abundance, but she also understands and teaches some of the central tenants of life in kindergarten. Share everything. Play fair. Hands, feet, and objects to yourself. Put things back where you found them. Clean up your own mess. Say sorry when you hurt somebody. Wash your hands before you eat. And warm cookies and cold milk are good for you. Roseanne is a true master teacher. She has wonderful instincts on how to teach every student in her classroom. She balances the need for play, socialization, and academics perfectly, and her students clearly benefit from this each and every day. She's a team player and works with her kindergarten teacher team to develop a program which enriches the lives of all students and provides them with the tools they need to be successful. No one can pull together a great craft project out of their hat faster than Roseanne. Roseanne possesses the wonderful trait of empathy. She truly understands the social and emotional needs of her students. She mediates social issues, ties shoes, handles boo-boos, and wipes tears in equal measure to singing songs, telling funny stories, and making her students laugh. Roseanne is also just a wonderful human being. Wife and mom to her three children, whose favorite day of the year is Take Your Child to Work Day, where they get to see their amazing mom in action. Roseanne balances work and family with apparent ease, which sometimes amazes me, even if she has to cook dinner at 10 o'clock at night. Irwin School is so proud to have her represent us as our Teacher of the Year. Congratulations, Roseanne Pansion. From the day she entered our school this past fall, we knew that Donna LaRaca was a special person. As an instructional assistant in third grade, she is simply amazing. Right from the start, she's been a team player, ready for any challenge and up for any task. Donna has a can-do positivity which serves her well each day. Her nominators were so glowing in their recommendations of her that their words speak for themselves. She employs every motherly trait and applies them dearly and tirelessly towards her students. Her warmth, determination to help, dedication, and overall calm and lighthearted spirit make her a gift to our classrooms. Donna is unfazed by anything that is thrown her way. She has the right attitude and demeanor that translates to being successful in the job she is in. She always asks questions when she feels it is necessary and makes sure that the well-being and safety of the students comes first. Donna is so deserving of the Support Staff of the Year Award because of her overall outstanding attitude and dedication to the job. She always has a smile on her face, no matter what, no matter what kind of day her students may be having. She is also very dedicated, going above and beyond her expected duties in many ways each day. Donna is a wonderful addition to Irwin School and truly deserves this award. She is kind, understanding, intuitive, and dedicated to both her position and the students to whom she is assigned. Her cooperating teacher says, "I am truly lucky to have her in my classroom." As you can tell by her rave reviews, Donna is a very special person, and we at Irwin School are very lucky to work with her. She is so incredibly deserving of this award, and so with great joy, I am proud to present to you Irwin School Support Staff Member of the Year, Mrs. Donna LaRaca.
Hi, everyone. I'm Liz Dunn, Principal of Lawrence Brook School, lucky to share our 2019 honorees with you. First, School Safety and Security Officer, Joseph Breda. Over the past few years, it has been quite clear that Joe was a stellar choice as an addition to Lawrence Brook School, not only as someone to keep the building safe, but also as an important part of our school climate. Officer Joe, as our Students and Staff column, has a perpetual smile. See it? On a daily basis, he greets administrators, staff, students, and families with his natural enthusiasm for our school, while always being mindful of security. It is quite moving to see Officer Joe escort our young preschoolers to their classrooms or use his kind, gentle tone to help cheer up a student or parent who enters the building and is feeling sad to say goodbye for the school day. Students immediately connect with Officer Joe and love to say hi or give him a high-five in the hallways. Our kindergartners love to approach him on the playground or in the lunchroom as he shows real interest in their lives. Serving as an educator for students has been another valuable role that Officer Joe has jumped into wholeheartedly. During School Violence Awareness Week, Officer Joe participates in making videos to model how to participate in a lockdown drill or how to walk respectfully in the hallways. Officer Joe takes his tasks seriously as he is aware of the important message he is delivering to the students about safety. When you walk in the main entrance of Lawrence Brook School, you can even see a poster with his picture and some helpful tips for students to be safe on the playground and in the community. We could go on and on, but I understand there are refreshments shortly. Seriously, we're so proud of Joseph Breda, Lawrence Brook Support Staff winner for 2019. Congratulations, Jo, and thank you. It is equally my pleasure to honor the 2019 Lawrence Brook Teacher of the Year, Dana Turpinning. Over the past 12 years, Dana has taught 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade, she even student-taught in our building. If you enter Dana's 5th grade classroom, you might have difficulty locating her. She blends right in as she sits with students at their desks or on the floor and engages in a thoughtful discussion or asks questions to help students think more deeply about their learning. Charlotte Danielson describes classrooms with a strong culture of learning as places where everyone, including the teacher, is engaged in pursuits of value. Rather than an atmosphere of getting by or punching the clock, both students and teachers take pride in their work and give it their best effort. In such classrooms, it is cool to be smart and good ideas are valued. These classrooms are characterized by high energy, by a sense of that what is happening is truly important. When I read those words, I feel like I'm reading a description of Dana's classroom, where every student, regardless of his or her background or ability, is valued and encouraged to learn and grow. Dana works tirelessly to address each child's needs and assets, and she makes sure everyone works to his or her full potential. Dana is also an innovator, always thinking about new ways to engage her students and enhance instruction. Interested in implementing a workshop model in your classroom, math classroom? Go see Dana. Wondering how to create an interactive science notebook using a Chromebook? Check out what the students in Room 504 are working on. And the best part is that Dana is always willing to meet, to plan, or to share, because she's been committed to building a strong culture of learning outside of her classroom as well. Dana, thank you for all you do each and every day to make Lawrence Brook School a safe, supportive, and engaging environment for students. I know I speak for the entire Lawrence Brook staff when I say that you truly inspire us all. We could not be happier to celebrate this special evening with you. Congratulations.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Jones, and I'm the Principal of Memorial Elementary School. Thrilled to be here to share with you our two amazing staff award winners for 2019. First, our Secretary, Lisa Kelleher. Loved and respected by all members of the Memorial School community, Lisa is stellar in supporting staff members and families in navigating administrative and organizational matters day in and day out. Lisa also serves as a positive light who never fails to leave you with a smile. Lisa is the epitome of support at Memorial School and is best described as accommodating, amiable, and warm by her nominators. When you enter the office at Memorial School, after checking in at the security desk, of course, you easily see Lisa's eagerness to serve. With 584 students and their families and 129 staff members, and Lisa treats each inquiry with the same care, she incredibly organized and efficient qualities which are highly valued by our staff. Lisa has the magical capability of staying calm in high-stressful situations and busy times. She is a tremendous problem solver who consistently pulls through every issue that arises. Even when she does not know the answer to a question, Lisa will jump hoops to find out. She goes above and beyond to assure that each staff member is informed and listened to while simultaneously accomplishing her many other duties. Lisa is also essential when it comes to school climate. Her jovial personality is loved by all who meet her. Many staff members look forward to daily encounters with Lisa, knowing that she will always cheer them up and make them laugh, even on tough days. Lisa knows and cares about the lives of each and every staff member, recalling even minor details. recalling even minor details. We are thankful for Lisa in knowing that there will never be a dark cloudy day when she is around. Memorial is incredibly lucky to have such a compassionate, kind soul in Lisa Kelleher. Please join me in congratulating Memorial School's Support Staff Superstar Lisa Kelleher. And now, for our very special Teacher of the Year, Morgan Rambe. If there's one teacher who does it all and always strives to do more, it's Morgan Rambe. As a vital member of the 3rd grade team of stellar teachers at Memorial Elementary School, her list of achievements is both incredible and admirable. Morgan is only in her 4th year of teaching, yet she performs her duties with the expertise of a veteran teacher. Her wealth of knowledge, amazing ideas, creative personality, and willingness to go above and beyond makes her a model teacher. She doesn't just display these qualities in her classroom, they extend throughout the entire school community. Morgan is a co-advisor of the Memorial School Student Council. She works with students to find ways to better serve the community and world. In addition, Morgan co-plans the Veterans Day Assembly, Dance-A-Thon, and several other fundraising initiatives. Morgan's passion toward teaching is palpable if you spend even only a second with her. She goes above and beyond each day for her students. Her lessons are engaging and meaningful, which keeps her class excited and motivated when they come to school. Students in Morgan's class eagerly go home ready to share the amazing things they learned each day, mainly because Morgan teaches them to connect their learning to the world outside of the classroom walls. It takes a big heart to shape little minds, and Morgan Rambe definitely has a big heart. In the words of one nominator, "I've been teaching for nine years and it's remarkable how much I learn from Morgan every day. I can honestly say she's a true model and someone I look up to." Please join me in congratulating Memorial Elementary School's Teacher of the Year, our own Morgan Rambe.
Good evening. Once again, I'm Joe Sutari, Principal of Warrens Dorfer Elementary School. I have the pleasure tonight to introduce you to a talented, creative, and dedicated teacher, our Teacher of the Year, Marcia Schneider. Marcia teaches 5th grade ILA and Social Studies, and her influence on our students is profound. Each year, I hear from former Warrens Dorfer students who tell me how well-prepared they were from middle school and beyond because of Mrs. Schneider's writing instruction. While she has many strengths as a teacher, her writing instruction stands out. Students model their writing after professional writers as she encourages them to learn from the best and experiment by using sentence structure, format, and craft used by the authors that her students are reading. The walls of her room are adorned with writing tips, quotes, and teaching points that she has covered throughout the year. Her students learn to edit, revise, edit, and revise again. And with a glance, Mrs. Schneider can move a student from saying, "My essay is done," to, "I think I'm gonna revise it one more time." In addition to her classroom teaching, Marcia does all the other wonderful things that make great teachers great. Notably, she has been the author of our school theme song for many years. This year, she penned "We Are Warrens Dorfer" to the melody of the Queen song "We Are The Champions." Walk down the halls during our morning announcements and you'll hear our students singing, see them playing air guitar, and hoisting their fists in the air in true rock and roll fashion. Mrs. Schneider knows how to get our students excited about learning and how to develop feelings of pride in their school. Marcia is always helping someone. She's been a mentor to many teachers. She invites teachers into her classroom. She goes into their classroom and helps mentor them. She's very helpful. So much so that recently, when a cover was knocked off the fire alarm pull station, she didn't ask for help. She attempted to take matters into her own hand by trying to put the cover back on herself. Caught on the video camera by this year's Support Staff Member of the Year, Officer Jane, Mrs. Schneider can be seen struggling to put the cover back on, then engaging the pull switch on the fire alarm and apologizing profusely as the alarm sounded and students were filing out of the halls and exiting the building. I think Marcia still gets good-natured reminders about this event in the form of firemen's hats and Smokey the Bear stickers in her mailbox. If you're looking for her when school is not in session, you'll find her in Florida, spending time with her four grandchildren, Jet, Hawk, McKenna, and Adeline. In the audience tonight to share Marcia's special night are, of course, Jet and Hawk, along with Marcia's son Evan, her daughter Beth, and her husband Bruce. I thank all of you for sharing such a wonderful teacher and wonderful person with us. It is with great pride on behalf of the Warrens Dorfer community that I congratulate her as Warrens Dorfer's Teacher of the Year, Marcia Schneider. As I think you heard me mention, Marcia mistakenly pulled our fire alarm. But she was not the first one to tell me that she was the culprit. As we were filing out of the building, Officer Jane quickly found me and announced, "I caught the perpetrator on the video. I caught her in the act. I know who did it." Needless to say, Jane takes her job very seriously. Officer Jane Materangelo proudly serves Warrens Dorfer Elementary School as our lead SSO. Jane keeps us all safe as she coordinates our security staff, refines safety drills, and ensures that every student enters and exits the school safely every day. Security is Jane's number-one priority, but she's so much more to our school. She's part of our Warrens Dorfer family. She stays after hours and attends nearly all Warrens Dorfer events. She knows student and staff birthdays and anniversaries. She recognizes happy events in our teachers' lives, and she's the first to offer comfort and support to those who are in need. Before coming to Warrens Dorfer, Jane was a manager of police officers when she served at the EBD for over 25 years, retiring as a lieutenant. Her service and background make her more than qualified for her position, but it's her caring, get-things-done personality that makes her loved and respected at Warrens Dorfer Elementary School. Throughout the day, Jane can be found walking the halls, pacing the perimeter, even trekking through the woods that surround our building to ensure our safety. Seriously, I see her in the woods each morning. She will gather Toys for Tots, organize Apples for Education, Count Pennies for Puppies, and hang student artwork. And she'll do it all with a smile, knowing that our students and staff admire her and see her as an important part of our school. Jane is our woman of steel. She works out each morning and proudly shares photos of the deer she has hunted and gotten. She's also our warm-hearted protector. She can often be seen giving and receiving kindergarten hugs throughout the day. In addition to her Warrens Dorfer family, who is here for her big night, Jane's husband Joe, her sisters, nieces, nephews, and even her neighbor are here to support her. Thank you all for coming. For her outstanding work ethic, for what she means to our school, and for her dedication to our staff and students, Jane Materangelo is an outstanding choice for Warrens Dorfer's Support Staff Member of the Year. Wow, that's a tough act to follow. But then there was Mike Gaskell, the Principal of Hammershold. Welcome to my school. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to honor some special individuals. And starting with a very special teacher, Amber Morabito as our Hammershold Teacher of the Year. Amber's many, many things to many people. Here's what her nominators had to say about her. Amber's always been an inspiration to work with. Her dedication to her students is evident in every single day. Her engaging lessons in reading, writing, and speaking gives students a voice and a structure which allows them to explore their own abilities. Amber has high expectations for all her students who are motivated to consistently rise to those very high levels. Her rapport with staff, parents, and students is evident in the feedback she receives during American Education Week. Amber typically receives dozens and dozens of thank-you cards, filled with specific praise from her students, past and present, for helping them in some way. As some of these children say in their own words, and I quote, "To improve reading skills and never giving up on me." Amber's infamous for making learning fun. She spreads an underlying enthusiasm and passion about language arts that is contagious. Working with colleagues, her professionalism is head and shoulders above anyone else's. Her guidance and expertise for the language arts units of study has supported many new teachers. Her efforts in co-hosting our school's Annual Relay for Life has been remarkably successful. She takes pride in this event because it is very personal to her. Her relentless hours of work have paid off year after year, raising $15,000 last year. Now, that's larger than some whole towns make at this event. As her principal, I personally echo the words of those who nominated her and those who are here to honor her and recognize this talented individual tonight. Her sincerity, dedication, and heart are what set her apart as an exceptional teacher and friend. Amber, you're a big part of what makes Hammershold such a great place. To celebrate our unique diversity, thank you for your efforts in making Hammershold a caring, supportive place where colleagues, students, and me I can call home every day as we grow together as a school community. Now, come get your award. Now meet Ms. Susan Turek, an amazing instructional assistant. She distinguishes herself in her role by consistently surpassing all expectations. Sue has worked in the district for many years, having started as a kindergarten instructional assistant at Lawrencebrook School. Let's get a shout-out from Lawrencebrook. Three years ago, Hammershold stole her away. What's remarkable about Sue is how quickly she learns the routine of each classroom to which she's assigned, ready to assist with any task. One of her most distinguishing traits is her ability to instill a sense of calm in her students. And some of the adults, too, by the way. She's never intrusive, but rather guides students to gain independence in the classroom. Instead of completing tasks for them, she will prompt them to remember what is expectedness so they can learn. Sue enthusiastically supports her students in electives, for example, in music by helping them choose to attend their own choice of pull-out lessons for extra practice. She assists in setting up music stands and instruments, taking every opportunity to grab a teachable moment. Teachers can also rely on Sue when extremely busy with troubleshooting problems or conducting long-term projects as she will often jump right in to answer a student's question or that incoming annoying phone call. An integral part of the school community, Sue interacts with all students, not just the ones she's assigned to. She has positive relationships and continues to offer her support and encouragement. The students in her assigned classes never hesitate to ask her for help because they know they will receive a kind word of encouragement and support. There are many reasons to be impressed with what she does because she truly puts her heart and soul into her work every day. She is invested in the success of her students and empowers them, and that is the ultimate goal of someone in her position. We are all so very grateful to be able to work with Sue in our school and our classrooms every day. Please join me in a round of applause for Sue Turek, Hammershold Support Staff of the Year.
Good evening. I'm Mark Suter, Principal of Churchill Junior High School. Meet Colleen Benowitz, Secretary in our School Counseling Office. Colleen has only worked at Churchill for about a year, but in that short time, she's had a positive impact on our day-to-day operations and school climate. Colleen's demeanor with students is like no other. One nominee has shared, whether students arrive flustered, confused, or overwhelmed, Colleen greets them with her million-dollar smile and always treats them with dignity and respect. Colleen makes the students, parents, and staff feel comfortable and important in our counseling office. She acts promptly and appropriately with all members of the school community. Often, when a parent contacts the counseling office, they're feeling stressed themselves, and Colleen is able to confidently speak with them, make them feel understood, and get them to a solution. When a specific counselor is unavailable, Colleen is able to navigate the environment with ease and get another qualified individual to handle whatever the situation may be. Colleen's day is diverse, for sure. She's the first person to offer to lend a hand, whether it's organizing, copying, making phone calls, writing passes, or sending letters to families. When she finds a free minute, she spends it supporting the needs of others. Her middle name could be Dependable as she makes sure that everyone's requests and needs are met. Beyond her superb work ethic, Colleen is an overall amazing person. She genuinely cares about everyone at Churchill Junior High as demonstrated by her interactions. The growth from her knowledge, abilities, and compassion resonates throughout our building, touching faculty and students as well as the other lucky people who come in contact with her. Congratulations, Colleen Benowitz. In a year where we've all been focusing on the emotional well-being of our students and staff, couldn't be more appropriate to recognize Churchill Student Assistance Counselor LeAnn Young as our Teacher of the Year. LeAnn doesn't like the spotlight, although she often deserves it. She's more comfortable working magic behind the scenes and allowing others to bask in the glow. She's the epitome of a dedicated, compassionate educator, always going above and beyond, putting students, staff, and parents before herself. No matter what the challenge she is personally experiencing, her door is always open and her office is always full of students or staff in need of her counsel or support. LeAnn's day begins early with reminding text messages encouraging students to come to school, to be on time, and to remind them that she'll be there to support them. Once at school, you'll find her conferencing with students, attending IONRS meetings, investigating HIB cases, and managing... investigating HIB cases, and managing our mentor program by matching each recommended student with the perfect staff member. Magically, LeAnn also co-chairs our school safety team, plays a dynamic role in our Sources of Strength program promoting peer leaders and students and staff, and each holiday season, she organizes Churchill's Adopt a Family initiative to help families within the community. Last year, more than two carloads filled with toys, clothes, and accessories were distributed. She also facilitated Jeans for Teens, a Positive Message Program, and Art Therapy. Sometimes she commits small acts of kindness, like putting pencils in staff mailboxes, reminding them to pencil in time for themselves. To say that LeAnn has significant positive daily impact on the climate of our entire school community is an understatement. One nominator wrote, "LeAnn Young is one of the most influential people I know. She literally saves lives. As a student assistance counselor, she's trusted with the deepest fears and biggest sorrows." Another nominator mentioned, "I'm in awe of LeAnn." Well, LeAnn, I too sometimes am in awe of you, and it's with great pride that on behalf of the Churchill community and the East Brunswick School District, I congratulate you on being our Teacher of the Year.
Good evening. Mike Vanello, principal of East Brunswick High School. In 2015, an eager college student with a passion for special education and psychology arrived in the district. Rhiannon Nocello joined the support staff team at East Brunswick High School and over the past four years has dedicated her work to changing lives. As an instructional assistant, Rhiannon serves as a positive role model, not only to students, but to their other instructional assistants in our school. Rhiannon takes notice of the different instructional methods of the teachers she works with and adjusts to each subject, topic, and lesson for the students she serves throughout the day. She studies behavior plans, learning styles, and student interest so that she can best work with each student as they navigate their schedules. On days that other assistants are absent, Rhiannon has been an extra set of eyes to make sure that our students are safe and cared for. On occasion, when special instruction or behavioral needs arise that must be handled by the teacher in the classroom, Rhiannon jumps right in to make sure that instruction flows for the class and the class continues. She's always flexible and willing to adjust to the needs of the day. She takes the heart what is best for our students. On days that she is absent, she reaches out to her colleagues to ensure that her substitute knows every little detail about her students' day, such as locker numbers, schedules, behavioral charts, and what they usually bring for lunch, where the student sits for lunch, and plenty of other details, the students' day, to ensure everything runs smoothly. Every day, she arrives at school early with a smile on her face, is effective at working with all students, jumps right in to help whenever it is needed, and as most importantly, is working toward becoming an effective teacher in the future. Day in and day out, the students are always happy to see her, as well as listen to what she has to say. For all of those reasons, the staff of EBHS are so proud to call Rhiannon Nocello their support staff winner. Congratulations, Rhiannon. And now, our Teacher of the Year, Lynn Kapusta. Lynn is an exceptional teacher for exceptional students, celebrating 40 years in the district. Lynn has devoted all 40 of them to teaching math and special education. And after all these years, she still gets up each morning with the enthusiasm and devotion she had when she started her career. Lynn teaches a diverse group of learners with varying learning styles. The hundreds of children who have walked through her classroom doors have gone on to experience success due to her creativity and instructional practices. Lynn creates an individual lesson for each child, up to 10 different lessons for one class. She also prepares group lessons that infuse the development of teamwork and social skills. While her classes vary from teaching college prep to basic skills to preparing some students for standardized testing, Lynn takes it all in stride and works hard to ensure each student is successful and works to his or her full potential. She is available before and after school and regularly communicates with parents on their child's progress. On a professional level, Lynn goes above and beyond to better her pedagogical approach. She is constantly looking for new and innovative ways to teach her students, spends hours researching, incorporates technology in the classroom, trying new things, and attending workshops. Lynn shares her knowledge and experience with other teachers to help them better their own teaching. In her personal time, she teaches computers and knitting and is an avid runner. Lynn is truly a special teacher. She is kind, caring, dedicated, organized, inspiring, unassuming, calm, and maintains a great sense of humor, which is much needed when spending all day with teenagers. Most notable, however, is her love for her work and her students. It is hard to believe that Lynn has not received this award before. So it's my pleasure tonight to recognize East Brunswick High School Teacher of the Year, Lynn Kapusta.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jerry Skang, and this is the second year in a row that I have the distinct pleasure of bragging to you about one of the department's employees. In our district, many people work behind the scenes to ensure students learn in a safe, clean, and appealing environment. In 2001, the district hired its first painter, who spent the next 17 years affectionately known as LTP, which stands for Lou the Painter. Adored by staff and students alike, Louis Dobrowski helped maintain over 1 million square foot of educational space. In his role as master painter, Lou single-handedly painted the interior hallways of Chittick Elementary and Churchill Junior High Schools, which provided staff and students with a bright and refreshed learning environment. Additionally, with a critical eye on safety at the high school, Lou painted two concrete stair treads leading from the cafeteria patio, safety yellow, which increased the visibility for hundreds of students, staff, and faculty walking from the staff and senior parking lots. While Lou's performance in his primary role as painter has been exceptional, what truly stands out this year is his willingness to help accomplish other district priorities. A true team player, he transported Chromebook carts for testing, assisted with snow removal operations, worked with the district electrician to replace the lights in this beautiful performing arts center. His efforts are really endless. Lou's coworkers at the support operations facility and supervisors all agree that Mr. Lou is absolutely deserving of this notable recognition. His professionalism, expertise, can-do attitude, and willingness to tackle any task and lend a helping hand at a moment's notice truly embodies the spirit and intent of this award. So please help me congratulate Mr. Louis LTP Dobrowski.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Joyce Bowley, and I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Academics. At the administration building, we have many great departments that work together for the good of the district. In the curriculum department, we have a very special secretary named Kathy Conjusta. Kathy began her career in East Brunswick in 2000 and has spent the last 19 years assisting teachers and administrators with a variety of needs. From purchase orders to supplies, Kathy's catchphrase is "No problem", because anytime someone reaches out to her for help, that's her genuine reaction. Kathy always makes you feel like your phone call or email is her biggest priority, her nominators wrote. She is always eager and happy to assist us in any way possible. Even when a request is last minute or a question comes out of left field, Kathy is there with her brilliant smile and can-do attitude. She stops at nothing to make sure her staff have what they need, even going as far as to hop in the car and hand-deliver materials needed for a workshop. Kathy's dependability is priceless, another reason why she is so deserving of this award. Year after year, she works tirelessly to complete the enormous task of organizing language arts portfolios for distribution to each student's teacher at the start of the next school year. This provides tremendous information so teachers can target instruction to students even before they walk through their doors in September. Without a doubt, the tremendous impact Kathy has on student learning is felt by the teachers she serves. Kathy's own children attended East Brunswick schools, and she never forgets what it is like to be on the parent's side of things. She treats parent inquiries with the same care, always emulating kindness and patience. On her own time, Kathy is a true supporter of the Hammershold Relay for Life each year. Her strength and commitment to this worthy cause make a positive impact in not only the staff and administration, but also with the community at large. As you can see, Kathy is our curriculum department hero. Congratulations, Kathy Conjusta.
That was fun. Now, we are so excited to celebrate those who have devoted 25 years of service to our district, starting with the amazing elementary teacher at Erwin, Mary Blaska. And the incredible instructional coach, Nona Lisa Sitchon from Memorial School. A spectacular elementary teacher from Lawrencebrook, Diana Deliani. And the unbelievable instructional assistant from East Brunswick High School, Carol Falco. And our wonderful business administrator slash board secretary, Bernardo Giuliana. And the amazing, multi-talented, having been at multiple schools, Kathleen Parkinson from Memorial Elementary School. From Erwin Elementary School, the phenomenal Rochelle Rosen. And social studies teacher extraordinaire from East Brunswick High School, Ken Soroka. Amazing instructional assistant from Chittick Elementary School, Susan Sausmer. The spectacular mathematical genius from East Brunswick High School, Tracy Smith. And last but not least, our wonderful special educator from Hammershold Middle School, Shari Sullivan. And lastly, where is Lynn? Lynn? Come here, Lynn. Come on up here. Come on up here. It is hard to say more than what's been said in a better way, but one thing that I have to share is that 26 years ago, I started here as a substitute teacher. And I was at East Brunswick High School and quite scared, because I was young back then, and inexperienced. And this angel of a woman took extremely good care of me that day and made sure that I had everything I needed. And you probably don't remember, but she is everything you've heard and so much more. And we are so lucky to have her for 40 years of her life. Congratulations. And we are going to turn the meeting back over to President, Mrs. Becker.
Okay, it has been a wonderful evening. Again, congratulations to everyone. And now, we're going to take a recess. So I need a motion. May I have a motion from the board? Moved by Mr. Winston, second. Oh, somebody told me I needed to do a motion. Okay, I got the power. We're recessing, guys. And we are going to enjoy refreshments courtesy of the East Brunswick Education Association Pride Grant. Thank you so much for coming. And we're back. And for those of you who missed it, that was an absolute wonderful ceremony. Next to the nights where we are honoring students, watching student presentations, anything with the kids, this is our absolute favorite night. And again, congratulations to all the honorees. So we're going to proceed with the superintendent's report. Dr. Valesky?
Thank you, Ms. Becker. Good evening, everyone. I would like to acknowledge the leadership and support that the Board of Education has offered me to engage the U.S. Department of Justice to work with us on our diversity and inclusion efforts. The student and staff sessions at East Brunswick High School have given us data to review as we move the district forward in enhancing our ability to support the needs of all learners. The League of Women Voters of the greater New Brunswick area visited the high school for a voter registration drive. They registered 83 students, and 37 more took forms home to complete and mail on their own. The event was run by our Row Kappa Club and led by their advisors Kimberly Hoover and Ann Hannah. The East Brunswick High School has four world language honor societies, French, Spanish, German, and Italian. We are proud to welcome new inductees to each of the honor societies, 36 to French, 49 to Spanish, 24 to German, and 35 to Italian. Students must demonstrate academic excellence in each of these languages, overall academic strength, and community service to be eligible for induction. We recognize the students' dedication, the support from their families, and leadership from the honor society advisors, Mr. Mondasir, Ms. Youshi, Ms. Wilder, Ms. Spagnulo. In sports, congratulations to Kristen Perrine and Rory Keegan, who were the East Brunswick Sportsmanship winners at the GMC banquet this week. These athletes have displayed exemplary sportsmanship during their time at East Brunswick as athletes. Varsity tennis players Jack Wang and Sadar Sharinavasan, who were the GMC champions at the first and third singles respectfully. Good luck to all the teams as we enter the GMC and the NJSEA tournaments. I'm proud to announce that our schools collected 12,050 pounds of donations for the Middlesex County Food Organization and Outreach Distribution Services, also known as MC Foods, for the 2018-2019 school year. Our district had 100% participation and donated the most food of all the districts participating. In my fifth state of the district address, which will take place at 6:30 p.m. on Thursday, May 23, at the JM PAC, I will share the accomplishments of the district. Following my remarks, our teachers and students will showcase innovative classroom practices right here in the Hammerhill Cafeteria. Again, special thanks to the East Brunswick Education Association and the East Brunswick Principals and Supervisors Association who are partnering with me in this event. And I hope to see everyone there. Again, we are pleased to announce this year's Wall of Honor inductees. You are invited to celebrate with these outstanding former East Brunswick team members at a ceremony preceding the May 30th board meeting. The honorees are Holly Howard, a former board member, and Beth Warren, former administrator. And I would just like to remind the school community, we have one unused emergency closing day remaining. And according to the board-approved 2018-2019 calendar, Friday, May 24, will become a non-school day for students and a non-workday for 10-month staff. And Friday, May 24, will convert to a full workday for 12-month staff. Administrative offices will be open. And additionally, Friday, June 7, will become a single-session day for all students, and all 10- and 12-month staff will be served lunch for grades K through 7. And now, that sounds very complex, but we will send reminders out to the community, and we'll refer them to the calendar on the district website. And then, one final comment. Tonight, the board will take action to formally adopt the 2019-2020 operating budget. And I will say, as superintendent of schools, this has been an extremely difficult process. It's been an emotional process. And I want to thank the Board of Education for their support as we move through many versions of trying to close a significant budget gap. Mr. Giuliana worked diligently to try to construct a budget that met the needs of all the constituents, all the stakeholders in the district. But unfortunately, we did have an impact this year with some positions that were being reduced and eliminated. However, there has been a lot of discussion about the impact to the media specialist. And I want to assure the community that we will have a media specialist in each of our 11 Blue Ribbon Schools. I also want to thank the board for their decision after the board hearing earlier this week to allow us to go back, to revisit the budget, and make a last-minute revision that saved four support staff positions. So for that, thank you very much. I know getting tonight was a difficult process. But looking forward to the future, we are looking at building efficiencies and economies that will help us get to a position of having to minimize those kinds of decisions moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Valesky. Now, we have, for the good of the cause, for the public, the Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of providing an opportunity to the public to express themselves. Individual comments are limited to five minutes. Members of the public are reminded, this is a public televised meeting of the Board of Education to protect the privacy of all students and staff. Concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board? Come all the way down. If you wouldn't mind coming over to the podium, there's the microphone. Oh, right in front of there. Forget the podium. This is much closer.
Hi, my name is Catherine Nguyen. I live on Old Tenant Court. I have two children in the Warnstoffer School. I've spoken several times before about the plastic and styrofoam trays at the lunch service. I had a very nice, brief discussion with Dr. Valesky, and I was happy to hear that he was a minimalist as a youth, which is really the direction we need to go. The trash that is produced at the schools is excessive. This is a problem for everybody. It is teaching the children very bad habits. And not only is it physically adding to the garbage, they are going to take these habits and bring them with them as they grow older. So we are teaching them the wrong way. I appreciate that you all are focusing on a more minimalist, more eco-friendly lunch service. This is the time for East Brunswick to excel at it, be loud, be proud, make a bold move that really starts to turn the whole state into a state that's thinking about what they're actually doing. The children will live a long time. The landfill closes in 10 years because we produce so much trash. So the point I'm trying to make is, this is the time. Make it count and do it right. I'll help in any way I can. I have some contacts. You guys are smart people. But this is a priority. I think I've done a lot. I've bought you all water bottles. Wake up. Thank you.
Dr. Valesky, we've been addressed several times about the issue of recycling and plastics. This woman, this very articulate woman, who takes the time to come here and speak to us, also a very articulate young man, a few weeks ago. Can we expect some kind of an update on a plan of options that the district is considering or putting together?
Yes. So we have already explored some recycling options for the one-time-use plastic. When we do get it into our environment, we are looking at an option with a company that is based right here in New Jersey. We would like to explore a pilot and see how students react to it and see how it works for us and what the cost-effectiveness is. But we also need to look at other options, as we discussed tonight, that could look at a smaller footprint in delivering our lunch service to our students. And I think we have some options we can explore from the conversation tonight that we might be able to share out with the board in the next coming weeks.
Oh, great. So hopefully, by the end of this school year, we can look forward to a presentation on what to expect.
Definitely before the end of the school year.
Great. Thank you. Mrs. Becker, on topic on this one, if I could for a second.
Absolutely.
One thing that the administration might look at is many universities have sustainability courses and majors and tracks. I suspect that we would, believe it or not, be considered a relatively small community in terms of recycling, sustainability, et cetera. And so, we wouldn't be able to get the kind of fancy equipment that big communities can get that can do things that we wouldn't be able to do. But I think that some of these universities and even some of their graduate students would be able to have some ideas that could be more cost-effective as you do your research.
And actually, Mr. Simmons, Mr. Crossfeld has explored some options that have investigated... We've investigated some universities and some options that Rutgers has deployed in their food service operations. So we have some pretty good data locally, but we have some other things that I think that we can explore and push that out to the board.
Just another resource, sustainable jersey for schools, I think, has a lot of resources. So I'd like us to take a look at that.
Yeah, and we have tapped in and looked at that as well.
Thank you.
It's a big district, and sometimes we move slowly. A lot of times, we move slowly. There's a lot of pieces to fall into place. But as we've just talked about, there are options being considered, and hopefully, there will be a plan solidified with more than just options, with an action plan and action items that will be presented to us in the next few weeks. I can't believe we're talking about the end of the school year already. So thank you for coming. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the board? Seeing none, I... Oh, yes, yes ma'am. Sorry.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Melissa Thomas, and I live at 15 Huron Court. I have one student currently enrolled at Lawrencebrook Elementary School who is in a self-contained autism classroom. Ms. Carrie Wybrannick is his teacher. I stand before you this evening to just voice a few concerns that I've raised through email to Ms. Renee Davis in the past as it relates to the instructional assistance staffing model that is in my son Jackson Thomas's classroom. Currently, he's in a self-contained classroom with aides that are assigned. He's a one-to-one, in a one-to-one program. Essentially, what I have observed is that children that are in a self-contained program that have a one-to-one aide, that then translates into six potential children on the autism spectrum with up to 12 aides rotating in and out of the classroom in a typical day. Due to the complexity of the children that are in the classroom, this leads to very significant challenges due to all of the changes and lack of consistency experienced in the classroom. This also leads to changes in how the instructional aides are facilitating the communication that is delivered amongst the children in the classroom. So I stand before you today to express my concern related to the instructional assistants and the timing and hours that are provided to those instructional assistants in the classroom that are aiding in the self-contained program to ensure that we think about longer-term timeframes for those aides in the classroom that could reduce some of the challenges that impact the children. I've seen an increase in behavioral things with my child due to these significant changes in the classroom, and I'd like to kind of hear the board's thoughts on that.
Ma'am, we don't address personnel matters publicly or student matters. So we will take your comments under advisement. We will talk to Dr. Valesky, the superintendent, Ms. Davis, and someone will be back in touch with you.
Okay, thank you. One more item that I'd like to address, and this is in relation to board funding. I know that there has also been specific rules that were up for discontinuation as it relates to funding. And I just want to ensure that we are considering all children of the district, as well as those that are in the autism program, because that does significantly impact those children more than you could ever imagine.
If you don't mind, if you... There is a young lady at the back of the room, Trudy Atkins. If you wouldn't give her your contact information so we could reach out to you after this meeting and make sure that we get answers for your questions.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the board? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public portion. We have 29 items under our annual actions tonight, which are part of our reorganization. I would like a motion for items 1 through 29. Moved by Mrs. Lacks.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Chu. Is there any discussion? Is this a roll call vote?
Yes.
Okay. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Lacks?
Yes.
Mr. Seeler?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. Guys, it's a little hard to hear up here. So if you're motioning or something, kind of wave your arm. Get a visual going. Thank you.
Please also turn on your microphones if they're off.
Okay, now, we're on to the Board of Education items. Under the Board of Education, we have two items, policies. Can I please have a motion for a policy of first reading and approval on a second reading? Moved by Mrs. Lacks?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sizmar. Is there any discussion? Susanna?
Just one small comment on the policies in the first reading is just to have a global check for where it mentions parents, that it should say "parents" or "guardians."
So noted.
I'm sorry?
Where is this parent? We'll have "parent" and "guardian," "parent" slash "guardian."
Yeah, and also in the policies, just so you're aware, in the front end of all the policies, there are definitions that talk about what the terms mean, and it's defined...
So if it's defined to cover "parents" and "guardians," then we're okay? Okay, thank you.
Okay, will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Lacks?
Yes.
Mr. Seeler?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. I'd like to combine the next two items on the agenda.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. I'd like to combine the next two items on the agenda, community programs items and facility items. Can I please have a motion for that? Moved by Mrs. Lacks.
Second.
Second, oh, sorry, I looked that way, by Mr. Seeler. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstain. Motion carries. Under our financial services, item number one, can I please have a motion for the fiscal year 2020 school district final budget approval?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Simmons.
Second.
Second by Mr. Winston. Is there any discussion?
Yes, please.
Mr. Sizmar.
My comment on the budget may extend beyond speaking for myself, but, and slightly bend the rules, but it's okay, Matt and Bernie, it's, hang on and hear me out. The budget is a difficult process to ask the taxpayers for more money, and we understand a lot of people are suffering financially. So there is a limited cap on the funds available. I understand that in an organization, employees make choices and there are outcomes. When an employee chooses to break the rules, a possible outcome is their employment is terminated. It still hurts to let them go, but it can be understandable. When an employee chooses to do a great job and is dedicated to our students, and there just isn't enough money, and an outcome is termination of their employment, it's something that's very hard to understand, and it affects all of us severely to have to do so. I don't have all the answers, but we all do care about our staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Is there any other discussion? Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, this is a roll call vote. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Lacks.
Yes.
Mr. Seeler.
Yes.
Mr. Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, I would like to combine items, the next two items on the financial agenda, items two and three. Can I please have a motion for that?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Lacks.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Chu. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just two and three.
Yep.
I'm doing it for that reason.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Motion carries. Now, item four, which is travel reports for Lori Lacks. Can I please have a motion? You can't motion this.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Seeler. Second by Mrs. Chu. Is there any discussion? This is a roll call vote. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Lacks.
Abstain.
Mr. Seeler.
Yes.
Mr. Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Item number five, travel report for Barbara Reese. Can I please have a motion? Moved by Mrs. Lacks.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chat. Is there any discussion? The secretary please call the roll.
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Lacks.
Yes.
Mr. Seeler.
Yes.
Mr. Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
Mrs. Becker.
Yes, motion carries. I'd like a motion for the remaining items on the agenda, that being the human resources items and student services. And may I remind the board that there is an addendum Personnel Actions and also the Confirmed Harassment, Impeachment, and Bullying Incidents Report on the dais. So can I please have a motion for those two items? Moved by Mrs. Lacks.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hong. Is there any discussion? Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Lacks.
Yes.
Mr. Seeler.
Yes.
Mr. Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Kirtina.
Hello.
How many more meetings you have with us?
Um, I think two or three.
Have they chosen a replacement for you for next year?
Not yet.
Well, of course, it's going to be impossible to replace you.
We'll bring her back next year.
Yeah, we could leave you, we could leave you back. We could not give you your diploma. You know, we have that power, so.
(laughing).
Tell us what's going on at the high school.
Sorry. Well, I'd first like to thank all of our teachers. It was Teachers Appreciation Week this past week, and also this was an amazing presentation where you gave awards to some of the best teachers in the district. And so I would like to thank them, as well as the teachers of the high school, for making our experience as great as possible. I'm graduating as a senior, and I can say that without them, they, well, I should say they were a captivating part of my experience, and not one class I've had was not entertaining in any way whatsoever. So I'd like to thank the board for that. But in other news, what's happening at the high school? So Decision Day was May 1st, and you may have seen many pictures posted on the Facebook group, I know I have, that of all the students celebrating their college decision or their decision to continue their career wherever they choose to go to. And I would like to congratulate each of the students for deciding on what they would like to do, whatever their future may be, and hope them all the very best for that future. We also celebrated with ice cream and got skipped 12th period, which was awesome, but it was a great experience. So I'd like to thank Dr. Vanilla for that experience. Also, this week, we started AP exams, and there have been no bells whatsoever, and it's been a very interesting week. And next week, we also have AP exams, so I'm excited for that to all be over. And then after that, only six more weeks till graduation. So we're all ready and raring to go.
Enjoy every minute of those six weeks.
Yes.
They're going to go very fast, and then, as Mr. Simmons can tell you, the year just hit after having just gone through, his son just finished his first year of college, they just go faster after that. So enjoy the next six weeks.
Yes.
Are there any committee reports, information items, or the cause for the board? Mrs. Lacks?
So I'm glad that this is Teacher and Staff Appreciation and our staff awards night, because I am so excited. You know, for a couple of meetings now, I've talked about the IPEL reunion honoring, whatever you want to call the event. Last Saturday, I'm proud to say that L7 was officially changed to the Room Honoring John Calamano, who was the founder of the IPEL program here in East Brunswick. And I had a bunch of your classmates who were incredibly lovely people. I get to see you all the time, but it was really nice to hear that you are not the only incredibly well-spoken, bright, and poised individual coming out of your graduating class. Some of these kids are going to Harvard, Rutgers, Rochester, Tufts. There was about a dozen or so of the current IPEL students with Mr. Mondry that were there. Tom Husar was terrific. He had these students speak, and he actually, I did not realize that he had such a, I, sorry, I'm very emotional about this, his connection to Mr. Calamano, when John Calamano was getting ready to retire, he actually had come in and was a part of the program as well. So it was nice having him there. But we had alumni that came from as early as 1973, and everyone spoke about the impact. And this is the thing, when you have a night like tonight and you hear about these incredible people, this is someone that I know for me changed my life, and the alumni that talked about the paths in their lives that they took from someone. And I laugh that I can't remember what I did yesterday, but I remember 30 years ago sitting in his classroom, and I wouldn't be up here tonight, for good or for bad, if it weren't for somebody like a John Calamano in my life that taught me the importance of civic responsibility and speaking out, and as Mr. Sizmar said so eloquently, and Dr. Valesky said, this is such a tough process, and everybody up here volunteers, and I learned that right here in East Brunswick High School from such a dedicated professional. So to all of our current teachers, our past teachers, and the ones that we haven't even met yet, that Danny Rogiro hasn't hired, but will be hiring, you know, thank you for the impact. You know, we think about our kids, but I was a kid once, and I thank you for that. So I just wanted to tell you what an incredible event it was, and just how beautiful it was to see seniors in high school along with one senior citizen and a couple of us in between.
Thank you, Lori. Any other members of the board? I would like to also thank Dani and her entire staff and whoever else you had helping you put together this beautiful program tonight. And to Dana, thank you, and the East Brunswick Education Foundation Pride Grant for sponsoring the reception. I hope there's still some cookies left, maybe? And also for our first aid boxes. Very good gift. We're all very klutzy. So thank you. We appreciate that. If there's nothing else, we do have a need for a closed session tonight. So may I please have a motion? The Board of Ed must discuss matters which are not appropriate, and whereas these matters are as follow, those items listed in tonight's agenda. The length of the closed session is estimated to be 90 minutes, after which a public meeting of the board shall reconvene, and action may be taken. Moved by Mrs. Lacks. Second by Mr. Winston. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. We're enclosed. Thank you and good night.